Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Cable Cast Post Agenda for Tuesday, October 31st, 2023, relative to the discussion on reviewing the city's Climate Action Plan. And the purpose of this post-agenda hearing is twofold: to update council and the public about the city's progress toward our own ambitious climate goals, and two, to provide a platform for the Sustainability and Resilience Team who is joining us here today to discuss their ongoing work and creative ideas about how we can create a clean, and prosperous, and healthy Pittsburgh in the years to come. I also want to take a moment before we really get going on this agenda, on this hearing, to congratulate Flor and the entire team on, and everyone in the administration and region who helped secure the Wind Energy Block Purchase Agreement that I was pleased to attend the announcement of on Friday afternoon. And I'm sure that you all, as representatives of this Sustainability and Resilience Office, can explain how this really does enhance our climate efforts in greater detail. But I wanted everyone who's listening in to know what a major achievement it was for us, for all of our partners like PWSA, the Western Pennsylvania Energy Consortium, the Sports and Exhibition Authority, and the people of Pittsburgh. So congratulations again, and we'll be excited to hear more about the impact of this project. But so with those opening remarks, I know we will have questions. I hope we are joined by other council members here in a short bit, and I'm sure there are some who are tuning in online as well. But with that, I'll turn it over to you and your team. You can introduce yourselves and provide some opening remarks and presentation.
Thank you, Councilperson Strasberg. So thanks for scheduling this meeting. We are very happy to be here to share our work with the public. First, I want to acknowledge Mayor Petito's advocacy for climate. In his previous administration, his work nationally and locally has been paying off. We can see federal funding coming here, and with all of these advocates we have around the country is how we got here. I also want to thank Mayor Gagnon and his administration for their support on our work to mitigate climate change and the consequences on our residents' everyday life, particularly on our vulnerable population. So here is the agenda for today. We're going to reintroduce our division. We're going to take a moment to see how climate change is already impacting Pittsburgh. We'll do an overview of the Climate Action Plan, then we'll dive into the goals, strategies, and successes by chapter. And then we'll share a few of additional climate work we're doing that is not necessarily in the plan, and then we'll share some ideas on how to support climate action in Pittsburgh. The success we are sharing with you today would not have been possible without the previous member of our divisions, so also want to take time to acknowledge that here. Climate work is hard work. It requires change in processes, thinking, and it takes time. So I want to acknowledge Grant Irvine, Sarah Legger, Rebecca Kehnan, Will Bernstein, Shelley Danko Day, who all worked on various strategies of this plan. We are grateful for their contribution and wish the best of luck in their current endeavor. We have already started reshaping the division with the addition of two environmental planners. We're very glad you joined our team. And we are also currently undergoing a strategic plan, a departmental strategic plan, during which we will review the current Climate Action Plan and identify strategies that we need to focus on, the manner haven't tackled yet, as well as topics that should be left for the full comprehensive plan we're starting next year. Is this connecting? Thanks for coming to my TED Talk. Should I keep? It seems like Zoom stopped working.
We'll bring someone in to help with the troubleshooting of that. If you wanted to pass that over to one of your colleagues, are you able to see the presentation yourself, or is it?
I can see it, but I lost the Wi-Fi connection. Well, I can set it to if I lost the Wi-Fi.
Can just speak through it?
Yeah, is it? Okay.
It's working for.
Yeah, we can hotspot it too?
Intros while we're doing this?
Yes, if everybody sees us, if you understand us.
That would be wonderful. Yep, good. I can just start our introductions for our division. My name is Marty Battistone. I'm an environmental planner in the city's Department of City Planning, and myself and the other environmental planner were moved into the Sustainability and Resilience Division last year, maybe? So we are not necessarily new to the department, but we are new to the division, and there's been a lot of synergy with the work we were previously doing and this division's work. Melanie, do you want to go?
Yeah, I think she got it. Hi, I'm Kayla Prendergast. I'm one of the other environmental planners that has recently joined Sustainability and Resilience, and my work focuses mostly around stormwater. I'll pass it to Melanie.
Good afternoon. My name is Melanie Ariola. I'm the Climate and Energy Planner with the Sustainability and Resilience Division, and I joined the team earlier this year, and I'm working on the greenhouse gas inventory and keeping track of our progress for the Climate Action Plan.
Hello, my name is Afton Giles. I was previously the Sustainability Coordinator for the division. I joined in 2011, and I am now the Principal Planner of Special Projects, and I still am focused on Sustainability and Resilience.
Wonderful. Is someone able to provide us, just while we're waiting for the presentation, with a little bit of background and context of the Climate Action Plan? We might be, I realize we might be getting into that in the presentation, but just so that people have that sort of foundation to build off of before we jump into the details of where we are now. I'm looking at you, Afton, but if there's someone else who might be able to.
Certainly. So we've been working on the Climate Action Plan for a number of years. It's pretty much has served as almost like the governing body or the governing document for our division. We are in our third Climate Action Plan, and the Climate Action Plan is basically our strategy for the city of Pittsburgh as how we're going to, as to how we're going to reach our goals, basically, for climate reduction, for greenhouse gas reduction, basically. We've been working on it for a number of years. It is a living document, so you know, as we set new goals and as some new things come along, we are able to roll those things into the Climate Action Plan. And it has a number of sections which we're going to go over, and I think that our report is up and running, so we will go through the chapters as we evolve.
But suffice it to say, it's maybe a little bit of a misnomer because it is, it does extend far beyond what we think of as purely a climate action plan to encompass zero waste and water and, you know, other items that we all know are connected and intersect. But yeah, for those who might be new to this idea.
And this is a team effort, so appreciate everybody jumping in here. So we see the role of the system, so we're revamping a little bit the department and having a strategy plan to like set our goals in the future. So things might shift a little bit over the next few months, but we still see ourselves as an in-house consultant, both for the city departments and the community. So our goal is to build neighborhoods that are resilient to shocks, threats, and stresses brought by climate change. What we do is we do lots of research and planning of best practices and find the best climate solutions to bring to Pittsburgh. We also develop funding strategies, and we support our implementation partners. We work with all city departments, Public Works, Mobility Infrastructure, Parks, Innovation and Performance, Permit License and Licensing, and the Budget Office, as well as various community groups and stakeholders and watershed groups. I do want to add that as, in this picture of being a national consultant, our ideal scenario is we educate and empower our partners, and then we hand over the work to them, and that project or program lives in their work and is embedded in their new practices. So we want to spread sustainability practices all over the community. So we are members of various networks to share and learn best practices, but we wanted to highlight a few of them here, and so I'll turn it over.
Yeah, we're working with the Water Now Alliance, which is a subgroup of the U.S. Water Alliance, and this is a group that is working to improve access to safe, clean drinking water, as well as improve stormwater management throughout the country, and they're helping us work with PWSA to better understand how we can manage stormwater in the city as we are going to see a lot of increased rainfall due to climate change.
We also are part of the Trust for Public Lands Park Equity Accelerator Program, which will be looking at how we expand and connect our greenways and parks across the city to create a better system as a whole. In addition, we are working with the Outdoor Inclusion Coalition on a lot of work that is really focused on activating our youth, both in city processes as well as just the outdoors generally.
Thank you. We're also part of the PGM CCC, which means PGM Community and Coalition, Communities and City Coalition. PGM is just simply the grid that we are a part of across several states, from Illinois all the way to New England, and all of those, and this grid is managing new energy coming to the, to the grid to make sure the power is balanced and can be provided reliably to everyone. So by joining this alliance, we're brainstorming with other cities, how can we influence cleaning or green at a faster pace? And finally, we are part of the White House National Building Performance Standard Coalition. It's one of the next steps in the building space, is how do we make sure our building perform better? And several cities have passed building performance standards already, and we are exploring how is it something that could be brought to Pittsburgh? Now I want to take a moment to pause here. Climate change is real. It's already happening here. The first picture is the most recent, largest, boldest, and impact event we've seen. It's the smoke from Canada that came over. We are also seeing increased precipitation, both by volume and by frequency, and this leads to more and more landslides. And this is the new normal. This is the result of the addition of carbon already in the atmosphere, and if we all work quickly, this can stay our normal. If we don't collectively and globally act to decarbonize our planet, this new normal is not going to stay. Things are going to get worse. So there's really a sense of urgency that we're starting to see. We've seen climate impacting us directly in the past year, but this is not the worst. We need to keep moving so it doesn't get worse than that. So I wanted to bring that back from and center before we dive into the Climate Action Plan, which we are all gathered here today to discuss. So the Climate Action Plan has often been presented around these seven goals here. So we have both municipal operation targets for the own Pittsburgh government, and we also have broader citywide goals. Like Afton touched on earlier, the Climate Action Plan was a wide effort with hundreds of stakeholders involved and public input, and so lots of the strategy developed in there are not in the power of the city necessarily, but in other groups. So we have a 100% renewable electricity use, a 100% fossil fuel-free fleet, and we have a goal of divesting from fossil fuels, which we achieved two years ago. Citywide, we have a 50% energy reduction goal, a 50% transportation emission reduction, a zero-waste target, or 100% diversion from landfills, and a 60% tree cannot pick over. We are delighted to share with you an update on our greenhouse gas inventory. We've been trying to collect data for several years, and it's been a little bit challenging, but we are very glad to bring you the 2022 data from our greenhouse gas inventory. So as you can see, compared to our baseline of 2003, we are at 90% reduction. We had a 20% reduction goal by 2023, so we are almost on target for this intermediary goal. If you look closely, though, you can see our 2013 and our 2022 bar, and they are the same size, so this means we have not been changing, making enough improvement to our emissions. However, if you look more closely at the color group on those bars, you can see the yellow has been shrinking. It's our commercial energy usage, and we have a 27% reduction in commercial energy from 13 to 22, so that's encouraging. What we can also see is this red block, which is our residential energy, that's getting bigger, and it's, it's part of the mayor's agenda already to focus more on our residents during this campaign, but if anything, this JG inventory is telling us that indeed our energy burden is a big issue. It's getting bigger, and we really have to focus on improving our residents' home if we want to keep, stay on track on our targets. So our Climate Action Plan is divided into six topical targets: energy generation and production, building and end-use efficiency, transportation and land use, waste and resource recovery, food and agriculture, and finally, carbon sequestration. As I mentioned earlier, our work evolves, and our goal is to empower all the divisions and departments to embed sustainability in their practices, and we have seen successes. Domi has a staff person that's dealing with electric vehicle infrastructure. The fleet manager in DPW is more expert than us now on electric vehicles and has EV purchases completely embedded in his purchase plan. Similarly, the Environmental Services Team is going and managing the waste recovery. And in the same fashion, we got the environmental planner, I'm talking too fast, I'm going to slow down here, but we had the environmental planner joining us. The food planner was moved out of our division in the new division called Integrated Planning. So because of this fact, we're actually going to focus here on the chapters that we have the expertise within the division at the current moment. I want to also highlight, we have two positions that have not filled yet. We're hoping to post them soon, but we are understaffed, and we are missing these people at this moment. Actually, want to take this second to appreciate the grace and the fortitude of the team for going through the last few months without being understaffed.
Now's your time to put a pitch out for those who might be listening and looking for a position, so what are those positions?
Exactly. If you care about sustainability in Pittsburgh, we'll watch that in the next few months. We'd be delighted to have you join our team. So each chapter is going to be led by the expert in this topic. Sarah used to lead the energy, but I've been working on that, so I will continue speaking. But hopefully, next year, when we do another Climate Action Plan update, we have staffed up and we can share the scene with more partners here. So in this portion, I'm going to list the objectives that are listed in the Climate Action Plan, so to bring them back to everybody's forefront of their mind, because we've not talked about the Climate Action Plan in a long time. So in there, it's listed reducing the natural gas fugitive emission by 50% by 2030, reducing line loss from electricity, creating a 21% to green energy system and the utilities of the future, install 200 megawatts of local clean power by 2030, and convert 50% of Pittsburgh customers to clean electricity. Here are some of the strategies listed in that chapter on energy that are currently in progress. So the implement a long-term infrastructure plan to replace aging natural gas lines and to optimize electricity delivery grids. Install smart meters. I think most residents have seen new meters coming around. And then also, I will not read that one out all along, but Duke and Light has been making progress in gaining authorization to install some renewable energy for their provider of the Last Resort Program. So this, translating those successes that we've seen, as Councilperson Strasburger highlighted, we just had a 40% renewable wind purchase agreement through our WEPAC consortium. So this is the first picture. Those are actually the wind power powering 40% of the city of Pittsburgh electricity. I want to take a second here to explain what is WEPAC. It's the Western Pennsylvania Energy Consortium. It regroups about 20% township, authority, 20%, 20, township, authorities, and other nonprofit organizations. And the goal is to, by bonding together, we can, we have a stronger purchase power, and we're able to provide and access energy at a lower price. So by bringing along the smaller borough and township, we're helping them save on their utilities costs thanks to our energy usage, and we also can access renewable purchase much faster. We work this summer on this wind energy deal, and I want to acknowledge the Public Works Department and the Solicitors Office and the council for voting the legislation to authorize this purchase. When government work together, we can achieve great things, and this summer was a demonstration of that. I also put a few images of other solar panels we've seen in the region deployed since the last update, so you can see Iselwood Greens. This pre-conversion of this site is the largest rooftop solar panel. This is the airport solar farm that is providing power to Pitt, and here is a hydro project that is coming in the future. So we, we are about 20, 25 megawatt installation, I think, in the region, so there we've seen an increase in actual solar power in Pennsylvania and around Pittsburgh, and it's exciting to see, and there's more project in the pipeline. I also want to highlight that this block process we did was important because it's actually going to be difficult to, for developer to quickly deploy any new renewable project in Pennsylvania because of what is called the queue. The projects need to be reviewed and approved to make sure they can seamlessly integrate with the grid, and there is a delay to three, three to four years now to get approved. So they're working on it, and hopefully, once the queue is resolved, things will accelerate. But it's just, if we were to find a partner now and try to finance an installation somewhere, we would not see the actual delivery for four to five years. So continuing to seek those purchases through the consortium is a great way to meet our goals by 2030. And I also want to highlight the Clean Energy to Community Technical Grant we received from the National Renewable Energy Lab. We have Green Building Alliance, and Duke and Light are the partners for that grant, and it's going to help us understand how to improve the electricity grid in Pittsburgh to make sure we can support any new technology locally, add batteries and transformer where it's needed, and making sure we can provide resilient electricity in our vulnerable neighborhoods. So we are looking forward to partner with this federal agency for this analysis. In the chapter three of the Climate Action Plan, a cover building and end-use efficiencies. The objectives of this chapter is to improve the quality of energy and water used data, ensure all new buildings are carbon neutral by 2030, ensure all new buildings have optimum location efficiency, mitigate high energy burdens in vulnerable communities, improve energy efficiency in residential, commercial, and industrial buildings, and reduce your volume by 50% below 2013 levels by 2030, and finally, improve the efficiency and effectiveness of public street and traffic signal. So this is a space, we have accomplished a lot of strategies from the plan, so we created legal framework for property access clean energy base. This is a program that developers can access to finance improvement to their building, existing or new. It's at Allegany County level, but we have seen several buildings already taking advantage of that, and therefore, building more energy-efficient building in the region. Allow for green information to be included in the Allegany County Multilist. This also was finally happened a few years ago, and so people, when, when purchases houses, now they can find out information about any green feature of the house, and so it's helping with the education of the public. Support state-level legislation enabling adoption of most-person building code. We are not yet getting the latest building code, but we made a huge improvement compared to eight years ago. Promote passive house building alliance. We are doing that as a city leader by passing a net zero ready ordinance, and we can see the market and the skills force in the region on passive house grow thanks to that. Install smart meters to provide better customer data access. Implement a storm feed to improve the green infrastructures. And strategies from the plan that are in progress, encouraging demand response program participation. This allow institutions or larger building owners to reduce their usage during the peak demand in summer and in winter, and therefore, reducing the stress on the grid and avoiding shutdown. Promote green and healthy homes initiative and related programs. There's several wonderful entities in this space, but there's lots of residents in Pittsburgh, so we need to continue scaling up awareness. Prevent stormwater from entering the combined sewer. We are working on it. We're not completely there yet. And transition to LED street light. So here are some pictures of these successes. Like I touched on, we have a net zero ready ordinances, and this allow Public Works to not build just up to the code, but to ask for more. And we worked with the Public Works, Public Works facility's team to ensure we develop ordinance that support that work. We don't want to add barriers by adding goals that are not achievable, so we develop a framework that helps them ask for better buildings. The staff has fully embraced this net zero framework and deploying it in their building retrofit and new constructions. So here you can see Oliver Bass House. There will not be an L0 building, but that will be a much higher, higher performing building thanks to this work. The Lincoln Place Fire Station is going to be a new design that will be net zero, and also the Firehouse Eight at the bottom here. And we have energy models now. It sounds simple, but for engineers and architects and for project developers, it's important to be able to see the models from the team and be able to hold them accountable. And we also pass, we work with Domi on the retrofitting and replacing the streetlights, so they are, they started the work on this project, and I think deployment is starting in 2024. We will replace 35,000 streetlights with LED lights that are also dark sky compliant. And by switching those old lamps to LED, we will have our energy consumption enough for a streetlight. So this is also a major achievement that we look forward to report on once it's rolled out, because we will see energy saving and dollar saving in this space.
In an effort to meet our stormwater management goals, we have updated our city's stormwater ordinance, so this is for public and private developments. The biggest part of this code update that we implemented in 2022 was to add an addition that we consider climate change rainfall modeling rather than just historic rainfall modeling, since we're seeing such an uptick in rainfall in the most recent years. That is not being considered when you're looking at the traditional rainfall modeling values that engineers typically use, and so with these updates, we have made progress to ensure that any new developments are going to be able to manage the stormwater levels that we're seeing as we go forward with the city. If you look at the bottom, we have a map showing the increase in rainfall in Pittsburgh. As Flor said earlier, there's going to be more frequent and heavier rainfall events as we keep. and heavier rainfall events as we keep going on. And we want to make sure that things like the Washington Boulevard flooding event don't happen again, it can be extremely dangerous. And it's important that we, as a city, work to improve our ability to deal with these larger rain events by adding more green infrastructure and having more stormwater management throughout the city and every development and every roadway. And so we hope that the new stormwater code can be the impetus for that.
Like I mentioned earlier, most of the transportation work is led by Dumi, PRT or other nonprofits. So we're happy to help schedule another meeting on this topic, but we have just one hour, so we're going to dive into the things we, we focus on right now. In the chapter four, I want to highlight that there is an ask for a comprehensive plan and we are starting on this process. So we're really excited to partner with the Strategic Planning Division in City Planning to, to roll out this comprehensive plan. It will be a just transition for Pittsburgh. This comprehensive plan that works at the intersection of racial justice, social equity and climate change. And away from extractive practices toward more regenerative and restorative economies and practices. It will improve the lives of all of Pittsburgh residents. This is an illustration of the just transition approach. We're happy to discuss more in detail. I'm not going to dive into that chart here. And I also want to highlight that with this comprehensive plan, you can see that those topics that are highlighted here, environmental justice, waste, energy, climate action, stormwater management, parks and open space, vacant land and food, are topics that our division is working on. So we will be actively supporting and working with strategic planning on this comprehensive plan. And I will hand it over to Afton.
Wonderful. So one of the things that we've been really working hard to do is to actually tackle our waste section of the Climate Action Plan. For a number of years, it was not overlooked, but it, we weren't doing quite as much. We also didn't have nearly as many people to work on it. So it's really awesome that we've been able to grow from being the Office of Sustainability and Energy Efficiency, which was just two of us earlier on, to within the last few years evolving to the Division of Sustainability and Resilience. So which allows us to really expand our focus and expand our staff. One of the things that we've really focused on is our zero waste goal. And we have a zero waste initiative and resource recovery. And what this initiative should do is to help to take us from having sort of a linear approach to waste, which is, you know, you create the stuff and you throw the stuff away, to becoming more of a circular economy where nothing is wasted. We view waste as being resources that can be used towards other things. In twenty seventeen, we did our roadmap to zero waste. And the roadmap to zero waste gives us a path to eliminate landfill emissions by twenty thirty. We also want to reduce consumption by twenty percent by twenty thirty. We want to reduce their landfill waste by ninety percent. We want to increase reuse by a hundred percent, increase recycling by two hundred percent. We want to divert ninety percent of our organic waste by twenty thirty. We want to divert ninety percent of our private collected waste by twenty thirty as well. And I have to definitely take my hat off to Environmental Services, who was an amazing team and the part of DPW. They do so much and they really carry the ball on most of this. We are pretty much just help for them, basically, to help to, you know, add resources to their division when we're working on our waste products and plans. We were able to get, they're working on their gold plan right now, which is definitely part of the Zero Waste Initiative. We're working on trying to reduce waste internally. We are finishing up our recycling, our recycling initiative, where we're getting out recycling bins to all of our residents finally. That's something we've been working on for almost ten years and it's great to see that come to fruition. We've also been working on a number of other things with them as well. We also have to say thank you to a lot of our partners that work with us. PRC does an amazing job, Pennsylvania Resources Council. And we also have support by other organizations like Sustainable Pittsburgh and many, many more that help us to do this work. So we're not doing it by ourselves, by any stretch of the imagination. One of the things I do want to focus on though is that ninety percent diversion of organic waste. And that's something that we've been working on quite a bit over the years. This is really important for us because eighty-nine thousand tons of food waste is what's produced by Pittsburgh. And food waste contributes to about eight percent of our greenhouse gas emissions, but in reality, it's actually a lot more. Mostly if you consider things like transportation. I mean, a lot of the trucks on the road that you see are actually carrying food. So they're carrying food to a destination or they're delivering food. So, and that's usually not accounted for when we do these types of evaluations, but it really should be. Internally, the city serves over two hundred thousand meals per year to vulnerable residents, of which twenty percent is estimated to become food waste. And we do this through many of our city parks programs, where we are serving meals at our senior centers or Healthy Active Living Centers and our community centers to children and seniors. The city county building, we did, we were able to get a waste audit done. And you can see that our mix included twenty-eight percent mixed paper, which could be recycled or composted, and seven percent were food scraps and then nine percent were paper towels. All of these items could be either composted or recycled. Our Healthy Active Living Centers, we were able to get a waste audit done as well. And we showed between forty to sixty percent of their waste could be diverted to composting or food waste recovery. We also did a waste audit on our farmers markets. And our audits show that between thirty to sixty percent of their waste could be diverted to composting and food waste recovery. So you can see that there's a lot of waste and a lot of opportunity there for us to, to do composting internally. So we were able to also take a look at what we could be doing more broadly in the city of Pittsburgh. This illustration shows that thirty, thirty-four percent of our waste, our food waste is actually coming from our residents and thirty percent is coming from restaurants. So these are the two biggest targets that we're, that we've chosen to focus on over the next foreseeable future, at least the next five years. Trying to reduce the food waste that's coming from residents and coming from our restaurants. PA, Pennsylvania, we are actually an importer of waste. Where only about twenty percent of the waste that are in our landfills actually comes from our residents. The rest of it is actually being imported from other, at other states, which is why it's really important, because we get sort of all the, the bad stuff that happens because of that, but only about twenty percent of that is really coming from us as Pennsylvanians. And food waste, it can be anywhere between twenty-five percent conservatively to up to fifty percent of what that landfill waste is. It really is one of the biggest contributors, along with paper, to our landfill waste and it doesn't have to go there. It's also estimated that forty percent of the waste that's going to landfill in terms of our food waste is actually perfectly healthy food that we could be either eaten by humans or it could be turned into some sort of an animal feed. So there's really no reason that we should be wasting as much as we are. So that's why we sort of focused on this. It's pretty important for us as well, because about one in five residents in the city of Pittsburgh is considered to be food insecure. So that waste really should be going to the mouths of our residents. This is showing you our waste audits, just to illustrate how much food is really being wasted internally. So you can see that where all those green markers are, that's all food waste that really should be. And it's in almost every single case, more than, more than half or at least half of what's coming out of our, out of our city of Pittsburgh operational centers. So the progress that we've made. In twenty seventeen, we drafted our roadmap to zero waste, which outlines the need for municipal composting programs. In twenty nineteen, we worked with the Allegheny County to draft the Municipal Solid Waste Management Plan. In twenty twenty, we've worked with Sustainable Pittsburgh and GBA to include waste tracking and measuring and the twenty thirty district, and the twenty thirty district program that we have, which the city of Pittsburgh is part of. In twenty twenty-one, the Food Policy Council began their Community Composting Working Group, which the city of Pittsburgh participates in. I'm on there and we also have council, council members on there as well, representatives from our council offices on there as well. In twenty twenty-one, Pittsburgh, we also received our USDA Composting and Food Waste Reduction Grant. That's what helped us to pay to get those waste audits done in twenty twenty-one. It also helped us to do our current composting, composting initiative that we have going on in the city. In twenty twenty-two, we conducted our internal waste audits. And in twenty twenty-three, we hosted, the Allegheny County hosted the composting working group. And then we also, during the summer, we were able to get our, to get our pilots running. So we've worked with three hundred residents in order to test eight different solutions to compost, municipal composting in the city of Pittsburgh. We also worked with city parks in order to test out composting solutions for our internal city operations at the Homewood Healthy Active Living Center and the Carrick Community Center. And we've also been trying to work with our city parks division to help to transition our farmers markets to actually do waste at farmers markets, which we actually currently don't do. But it would be really good to be able to pick up that waste from our farmers markets. We also did an ask to our, our twenty twenty-four budget for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of capital funding so that we can actually do composting in our residences. So we, we would like to really get a person who's dedicated, member of, of Environmental Services, to be able to focus on composting and organic waste diversion, which could include not just composting, but also of food, but also dealing with manure, because we do have a police force of horses. And also to include other organics, like increasing the yard waste pickups as well. We would also like to be able to start having drop-offs that are year-round, not just the farmers markets, but year-round. And our, we would like to at least try to get four done. So sort of north, south, east, west of Pittsburgh, a place to take your composting and then hopefully increase that to have at least one drop-off spot in all nine of the council districts by twenty twenty, by twenty twenty-five. We've also been working to raise federal funding, to get some federal funding. We did apply for a regional grant to try to pretty much do for waste that we, like we've done for energy and create sort of a WEPAC for, for waste, basically. So we have a regional approach, so we can take a regional approach to composting and organic waste recovery. And I will turn that over to?
I'll find that chapter.
All right, I will be brief, so we have time for questions and answers. But essentially, we have been making a lot of moves that not only improve the green spaces and open spaces across the city, but address some of the carbon sequestration objectives that were in the Climate Action Plan. And so the listed objectives are on there. And then if you go to the next slide, these are some of the strategies that were in the plan as well. And I'll focus on the ones that we've made the most progress on. We have, we secured a grant from the Trust for Public Land and then a second grant from the National Parks and Recreation Association, both of which funded some pilot programs in our greenways, which previously had not received any city funding, maintenance, capital investment of any kind for decades. They mostly were resident maintained. And so we were able to, if you go to the next slide, we have now done projects in the Hazelwood Greenway the last three summers. And those projects, we identified priorities set by the residents. And those were, the residents said that invasive species management, tree planting, trail expansion were their priorities. And so for three summers now, we have worked with groups like Landforce and Allegheny Goat scape and Tree Pittsburgh and Allegheny Cleanways as well in the Hazelwood Greenway. And then we added two additional greenways as well. And I think that this project best exemplifies the work that we're doing, which better, you know, kind of asserts some proactive maintenance in those spaces and not only puts more trees in the ground, but helps create a healthier forest when we're managing the invasive species in those spaces. And, you know, we're also doing a lot of vacant land work to better identify places for additional plantings as well as, you know, sites for urban agriculture and things like that. So I'll keep it brief, but basically, we have been focusing on doing a lot of ecological restoration in our greenways. Yeah, and this is Seldom Seen and then the North Charles Street Greenway, which is officially the Perry South Greenway. Were both funded by the NRPA grant as well.
Thank you. We wanted to bring up some of the work we've been doing that's not necessarily in the Climate Action Plan, or we think is valuable for the communities to know. So we have a dark sky ordinance. So not only are we replacing our streetlight with LED to save energy and money, but we are also adding dark sky requirement. We just mean that the light is going to go where it's useful and not wasted in the sky. And this is better for humans, for the wildlife and for the dark observing night light and reconnecting people with stars. We've also been partnering with PTH Lab, which is an initiative from our Innovation and Performance Department. And they invite startups to solve problems that the government may have and find champions in various departments and divisions to work with those startups. We've been very strong partners since the inception of this program and often work with one or two startups every year. And we're always happy when we can actually contract those startups to continue their work with us. So one of them is Clopiify and they're going to help us with our work of scope three emissions inventory. And also Ecoton, that was helping Afton with the composting pilot. They both went through the program and left and successfully contracted with us after that. We also want to focus our work on energy burden. Like I mentioned earlier, residents pay heavy utility bills and we need to figure out how to reduce this energy burden on all of them. And we do a lot of work in parks and open space planning. That Marty is happy to share more if you want. But those, this park planning is helping advance our climate goals. How can the council further the Climate Action Plan implementation? We would like to continue having your support in adopting legislation that advances sustainable future. We would like you to continue supporting budget requests at Advanced Climate Action. I will call out the need for Public Works Facilities Division to get more staff and more funding. They're doing great work, but if we are really wanting to meet our fifty percent energy reduction in our operation, we need to be fixing fifteen building a year and we're just not there. So we need to get creative on how we, we can do that. We also need the fiscal manager to get support for utility bill management. I've been helping them a lot in that space as a planner and as an acting assistant director. It's becoming difficult to really support them here. We're working with them and the Innovation and Performance Division and the controller to shift online. So they, everybody's interested in having a solution there, but we will need a staff person to really manage that. And I'll turn to the team to highlight other budget requests that we want to support.
We'll just take more money.
More money for everyone. And Afton already mentioned the need for the pilot project to, to continue there, for the composting pilot we are running. You, many of you are on the boards of authorities and nonprofit. And so we encourage you to use your voice in those spaces to continue to advance climate work. And finally, educate your constituents. I know they reach out to you with their concern. I think it's also time to maybe give back more information on the, our work or the, how the constituent can advance climate work. And for that, don't hesitate to leverage our divisions. We're happy to work with you and provide material and support to, for this advocacy work. And finally, for the residents that you need today or came in the room, we appreciate your support here. You are the important voices in this space. If everybody raised their concern and their motivation for more climate action work, we will see even more of it. So get involved locally, vote. Maybe people are not used to that in post agenda, but it's very important to, to vote, your vote matter and participate. If you're already a voter, get involved more. Talk to your representatives at the city level or state level. Share your feedback with the City Planning Department on Engage PTH. It's a website where the entire city is collecting feedback from residents on various projects we are leading. So it's on our city planning website. Go visit the, this page. We have many projects ongoing that are seeking resident feedback. So please join in and share your thoughts. Reduce food waste and compost your waste. Try to do rain capture on site if possible. Use public transportation, bike and EV. Also take advantage of the IRA rebates to improve your home. There is several rebates and tax rebate opportunities to improve your windows, your appliances. Shift to electrification for your heat pump, your boiler and your stove. So take advantage of this funding, what it's around. And finally, enjoy the parks, the public space and amenities. We are doing this climate work to get a better planet for all of us. This work can be hard, but we also need to be present and enjoy what we have here. So please use the resources we have in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'm impressed that you kept it as short as you did because you're, because of the amount of work, the breadth and the depth of, you know, what you're studying and what you are. of, you know, what you're studying and what you are implementing is is pretty is pretty huge that um I'm impressed that you were able to keep it in in the time span that we have. Probably could have gone on for a couple hours here. Um, so I want to acknowledge and thank my colleague, Councilman Bobby Wilson, for joining us. And um, you know, I have lots of questions. Um, if you have any questions, Councilman, you know, please, um, we can, we can keep this pretty casual and a dialogue. Um, so I'll start with a couple of questions, but if you have any, please feel free to jump in.
Thanks.
Yeah, um, so now where to start? First, I I wanted to say we will make sure to send this presentation, this slide deck. If you're able to send it to us virtually, we'll send it out to all members. So even those who are tuning in, who might be watching on um the City Channel or who are um uh tuning in on Zoom, will be able to s- to see it and reference it in the future. Is that slide deck somewhere already on your website, or is it something that we can access?
No, we made it for today.
Okay, great, thank you. So we'll send it out. We'll make sure to send that out. Um, but I'm sure the information that's contained in it, you could probably find. If a resident who's here today or tuning in online wanted to find that information, they could find it. Okay. Um, second, I wanted to mention that we, but the my goal initially for holding these uh types of post agendas on the Climate Action Plan was to hold one each and every year to make sure that, you know, we were all keeping ourselves accountable as council, as the city, and that the public could help understand where we were um on on uh reaching our goals. And then COVID got in the way, so we haven't actually held one for a couple of years now, but I'm happy to return to this, and the intention is to hold this every year. So with that, I'll jump into a couple of different questions. First, um, the clearly the um wind energy block purchase is a great example of the city working together with other government and nonprofit and private sector actors to secure secure clean energy. I'm wondering if there are similar efforts we could pursue alongside regional partners to expand other types of climate goals? What are the best opportunities for those partnerships for, you know, any of our goals um within the Climate Action Plan that you can think of?
First, I want to uh add that we want to expand the members of WEPAC, so we will be reaching out to other uh town uh townships around the the city and particularly the the Connect Network members. I think this is a great place to to start expanding. As Afton mentioned, uh, we've been having an issue with uh waste and recycling, and so there's an effort there, so I'll let you explain a little bit more here.
Yes, so waste is definitely one of the areas where we would actually love to do something similar to WEPAC, and we've been working with Connect in order to try to get that together.
That's great.
Um, we started a sort of a informal working group and we, where we were able to get together with ten other municipalities, um, and we put together our proposal um to the USDA for the next round of composting and food waste recovery um grant funding. So hopefully, crossing our fingers that um we'll hear back soon, um, they pretty much said winter twenty twenty three. Um, if we were to get that funding, it would be four hundred thousand dollars. Um, that would be divided up between essentially the ten of us municipalities and any other municipalities that wants to um to be part of it, so that we can come up with a regional waste plan. Um, so it's not only just composting. Um, composting would definitely be a part of that, and that's sort of what brought us together. But we all recognize the fact that we need to do some serious um waste reduction. Um, we also need to um try to figure out sort of our recycling. We also need to um work together in order to get that done. Um, one of the things that we sort of did a disservice for ourselves on is we all have sort of a diff, we're all recycling, but we're all doing sort of different things for recycling, basically. Um, and if we do a municipal composting program, we don't want it to be as sort of patched work as recycling ended up being, where one city does something a little bit different than another city does, and it causes a lot of confusion among residents in terms of like, okay, well, if I'm in Pittsburgh, I can recycle this glass bottle. But if I walk, you know, over the border to another city, oh, they don't take it. So we just want to make sure that um in the future, when we do waste, that it is something that we do as a regional, as at least Allegheny County, if not more broader, as Pennsylvania, so that we are able to um make sure that we end all of that confusion. We can have more streamlined education, um, we can have more streamlined s- facilities and centers. And anybody who wants to do business in Allegheny County, or from the outside, they they know what the expectations are and what the rules are going to be and what they're going to have to come and bring to the table so that we, as local government, and by de facto, local government, the residents sort of helping to inform that process, um, they know what our residents are expecting of any companies and corporations that are dealing with waste that come to do waste with us, basically. It'd be a much more uniformed process in the future that's going to be led by residents and by local government, hopefully.
Oh, that's great to hear. And I know that, um, well, just for anyone who might not know, the Connect is the Congress neighboring municipalities to Pittsburgh and is has been um thriving for a long time now. And I know that I happen to know their leadership also right now is very into this issue. So great to hear that we are already in conversation and actually going for grant funding for a regional approach approach to composting and waste more. Uh, was there another um someone else who wanted to weigh in? I didn't want to cut off conversation there.
Um, I can just add that, um, you know, water management is a regional issue, and we're working directly with PWSA, who is a regional water provider, as well as Alkasan. Um, these are sort of their smaller region, but we also have a lot of connections with the Southwestern Pennsylvania Regional Commission and their Water Resource Center, and we're working to create um more uh cohesiveness between all the watershed organizations that we have in the region. We have a lot of great organizations, but there isn't a really good space for them to connect. So we're working to create a sort of broader southwestern Pennsylvania regional watershed organization so that we can all work together on this. There's also a lot of work going on in the Ohio River um watershed basin. And so this is more complicated because it involves working um with not only people within southwestern PA, but with the Ohio region and West Virginia as well. And um, but it's really important that we all work together to ensure that we're managing our water appropriately.
Mm-hmm. Great. Uh, my next question is, so we were fortunate to have um Secretary of Energy Jennifer Granholm uh visiting with her team in Pittsburgh a couple of weeks ago. And she was very, very um forceful in her, you know, sort of advocacy around the the funding that's available, this historic funding that's available for not only states and maybe cities to take advantage of, um, mostly in a competitive grant process, but also for individuals and households to take advantage of. Um, my fir- the first part of my question is, how can we? It sounds like we are going after not just those, you know, uh, those uh those specific grants that are sort of um uh available for for a short amount of time from the federal government that the uh the secretary was discussing, but other grants. But how can we best position ourselves to take advantage of this maybe generational historic funding? Um, and if the city itself is not eligible, what are we doing? What can we do better to support the efforts of institutions who are or combined forces there? Oh, oh, that's the first part of my question. This, I'll ask the second part in a second.
Um, so we, most of the federal funding is actually not directly for municipal entity. A lot of it is for businesses, a lot of it is for community groups. Um, one of the issues that the federal government is aware and trying to address is that federal funding, uh, the windows of opportunities are often short. So they announce funding coming, and then you have three months to uh create a grant application and submit it. Uh, but they are also designed this funding for communities to improve uh their 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 neighborhoods. And so we're struggling a little bit with their existing timeline and how they've been operating for many years versus this need to have community uh ac- uh this uh community access to funding. And so we, we're trying to balance uh awareness and inform the committees that the grants are available, but also federal grant applications are very difficult to put together. And most of the community groups uh don't have the staff or the experience to 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 apply for a federal grant. So that's part of the the thing we want to tackle. And I think with the strategic plan, we're going to to have a a more defined visions. But that's one of my goals for next year of how do we, as a division and our experience in applying for those grants, help those communities uh apply? And I think we've seen a lot of uh a round of funding in the fall, uh, where it was just too short to apply, but uh with the expectation that they're going to come back next year, we can already start working with our communities uh to develop project and applications so that when the grant is announced again in August or September, the project is already put together. And it, they just have to to submit it. So if if you know of uh clean energy um and environmental justice project in your districts, uh, feel free to to talk with us. And with the comprehensive plan, we're also going to be doing more outreach and trying to really emulate those needs and uh and make sure we make as much federal funding flows into our neighborhoods.
Mm-hmm. So communities getting their version of like a shovel ready project, ready to basically apply for with some assistance. Um, and then the second part of my question was, for those, um, say, you know, energy efficiency, household energy efficiency, um, um, loans and grants and rebates, um, is there someone, who who are the local parties that are helping to get the word out to residents in Pittsburgh, in Allegheny County about these programs that can help people? It's like the unsung hero of climate um abatement, right, is is energy efficiency? Because it, yes, it helps to save energy. It helps people save a lot on their electricity and other bills, um, even gas bills if they're, you know, heated by gas furnace. So um, it's kind of a win-win for a lot of people, individuals, but also then reduces energy use and climate emissions. How do we make sure that people know about this? And, you know, is the city doing anything? Are there partners that are working on that?
We're not doing anything just yet as a city, uh, but I also think part of our energy burden work and residential outreach is something we intend to do next year. I also want to give credits to Duke and Light. Their portal has actually uh good documentation and explanation about how to access uh those resources. And uh I would recommend all of the environmental groups in the room and listening here to also send emails to their mailing list saying that the those rebates are ready. Some of the federal funding is not quite shaped up yet. The the state feder- uh funding, the federal funding flows to the state is not really uh uh, the programs are not defined either, so more funding is coming in the future. But the rebates are here, so if your AC broke this summer or if your boiler is old, now is a good time to think about changing to an electrified version of it, and you rebate, get a rebate or a tax credit for it.
Great. Um, the, obviously, the completion of the greenhouse gas inventory, which was, you know, challenging in in some ways to complete because of just, you know, the herding of cats necessary to get all the data we need, was essential to it to achieving um thorough monitoring of our emissions. But are there any other internal or external studies that we need? It seems like we're doing a lot of studies, so my my guess is we don't need a lot more. But is there anything else that we're really, like, where there are gaps in our knowledge or studies that are needed? Are we sort of in more, let's maintain the data that we have and implement as best we can, find the funding to implement and the staff to to implement? Where where are we right now?
Uh, for our own utilities, actually, we need to uh get better access uh to all of our data. Uh, PWSA changed the number of the accounts, and this is just a logistic issue, but we we have troubles now really uh tracking uh our PWSA bills. So we need to make some internal effort on that, but we're working towards solving this issue. Um, our waste data for the inventory is also difficult to keep track on. So if we could work toward getting better waste uh uh data, that would be useful. Anyone jump in if there is more that I needed? I think for, yeah.
Um, specifically, when it comes to our our landslide prone and steep slope overlays, um, we have a bit of a gap in the the data, um, just because the data that we use currently is is a bit outdated. It's from the seventies, and so we're working to um hopefully get that updated and have better standards around these issues so that um we can better understand when and where there might be landsides that can um, you know, impact residents.
Councilman Wilson, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you.
Take a break from my uh my hammering of questions.
They're with me. I lost my voice a week ago, and it is slowly coming back, apparently. So I just had a general question. I might have more questions from that. But essentially, um, in the current budget that's proposed, I'm sure, you know, how many of you worked on that? You know, do you see, uh, is there other investments that you can point to? You know, I realize some of these are goals that are internal in departments and not all of them take dollars to get to, but um in terms of dollars, are there any commitments that you see in the in this upcoming budget? That's for everyone. I'm not sure who's.
I I I think we we are doing a great job collaborating with uh the various department and divisions, so their ask are more and more uh inc- inclusive of sustainability goals. I will reiterate that it's uh crucial to fund all of the facilities uh budget request. Uh, we're not fixing our building fast enough, so we we should definitely continue advancing that. And uh, uh, we also need a a utility staff. Uh, I know the request was made. I don't know if it's still in the budget or not, but.
A what staff?
Utility bill manager. So the the in Public Works Department, they uh requested a utility.
You.
Utility, the bills. That's my French accent.
Yeah, I got you.
The water or gas and electricity. That it, we have a hundred fifty buildings. We have three hundred facilities total. All of those have two to four utilities per building, so that's a lot of invoices to manage. And uh, we need somebody just solely focus on that. Because if we have somebody uh charged with just that task, we can see if a utility bill is com- is uh rising up, maybe there's a leak, maybe uh the light stays on somewhere, maybe an oven is on. I don't know what can be happening. But with somebody monitoring that, we can intervene quickly and save more energy, and we can benchmark our energy usage uh every year. Um, with the stress on the electricity grid, we make it more and more uh request to modulate our energy usage. So maybe dim the light or turn the AC. And uh i- if we don't have somebody uh in charge of that, it's harder to take action uh when the when it's requested. So we could be more flexible with this position being funded.
This is called a utility, what again?
Yeah.
Tell me what?
A utilities manager. So somebody who can actually help to manage the bill.
Yeah, right. And so other other cities have this?
Yes. I can write a memo and more details around that if that's useful.
Um, and I'll answer your question. The things that are in the budget that are helpful in advancing a lot of this um is the additional funding for the comprehensive plan, which will hopefully chart a course for a lot of these different topic areas and and land use more generally in terms of things that maybe aren't in the budget, um, that weren't necessarily even requested, but just um acknowledging that the, you know, lack of of funding towards floodplain restoration and whether that's acquisition of properties that are in the floodplain or creating, you know, proactive floodplain restoration projects. Um, you know, in the years to come, I think that would be something that we're not currently doing that could have a really huge impact for residents that are in those more vulnerable areas.
Um, something else that we um asked for for the budget for this year. Um, I know that we did ask for um the hundred and fifty for composting, but even if we can't fund all of it, it would be really good, at least to be able to um help to support an additional staff person in Environmental Services that can focus on organic waste recovery, um, which is not just composting, but also being able to um come up with a strategy so that we can do um more of our yard waste recovery. We only do it twice a year. Um, I know a lot of residents would really like us to be able to pick up their, um, at least their yard waste more often than twice a year. Um, we also could use some additional equipment in Environmental Services to actually start processing. And um, I think it's a it's a chipper, we um to help to take the street trees that we break down and be able to actually chip them up and turn them into mulch. Right now, we actually pay a company to take our trees, to chip them up, and then they essentially give us a portion of that back. But it costs a great deal to work with them, and we could actually be um recovering that funding by having the equipment in house in order to do it ourselves. Um, and there are tons of community gardens um and um and agricultural um uses for that wood waste all over the city of Pittsburgh where it it doesn't necessarily mean, uh, where it would be good for us to be able to have that access to that resource. Um, it would also be great to have somebody who can actually focus on pushing things like composting forward for the city of Pittsburgh. Um, right now, we need to do some more investigation into, we couldn't even do a municipal compost um rollout even if we wanted to, because there are a lot of other first steps that we need to get to. And having a person who can really focus on helping us to get there, um, would, I think, help push the initiative forward. So environment, and it would also be great to have somebody who can help with education and outreach, not just for um composting, but also for our recycling as well. So education is also is always something that's really important. Um, we do do sort of a flyer once a year that goes out to residents. Um, but it would really be good to have a portal um where they could actually have access to um all waste education, you know, at all times, like when their pickups are, when their drop offs are, all that, those things. And I know that we did um do sort of a combined ask with Environmental Services for that educational resource as well. So that would be great to have something.
Are there any, thank you, are there any um electric curbside initiatives that has been requested or people work with departments on?
Um, not directly to my knowledge, but uh I know there's more and more uh discussions around it.
One what?
Could you clarify your.
Yeah, yeah, it's like charging, people charging their, yes, so I.
EV charging at the curbside.
So we, we know that there is some demands. We know there is some interesting pictures of creative solutions that residents are coming up with, but it's something Domi is focused on. They have a staff person working on the right of way and vehicle charging. So it's, we are aware, we need a plan as a city for.
Yeah, I'm aware, like, certain grants that come up, and I can't remember, I have to look through my emails, but I met with a few companies and I'm interested to, you know, try and partner with a company to do curbside. I think it's an interesting concept that even though homeowner can, can, you know, they don't have to have an EV, you know, they have to own an EV to have a curbside, like they can actually, you know, get funds from charging, from others charging at the curbside in front of their property. So I think that's, you know, especially needs like higher, I don't know the right term, but higher utilization areas of parking, or even the parking authority, which.
And we talked with the Parking Authority around deployment of chargers, whether the city or the Parking Authority owns them or businesses or residents. And we're happy to continue the discussion with you.
Yeah, I mean, currently, yeah, currently, we just, I believe, we got as far as letting people, you know, put up the cord across the sidewalk as long as they have.
Yeah, a cover. We accept it, yeah, but we need to.
We need to go way further than that and change it some. It's currently something I've been looking into. So anyone sitting here wants to collaborate, let me know.
Yeah, happy to do so.
To that point, it also sounds like there are, you know, as we're talking about switching out our, and upgrading our, all of our streetlights, that some smart streetlights have the capability of actually pulling down the charging cable to charge your EV from the streetlight itself. So it seems like that's a conversation we can, should continue having with Parking Authority and with Domi and this, this division as well.
Yeah.
So many options.
And one more. What do you think about the, these are parking spaces? This is, I don't know how to describe it, but there's a company out there that does carousel parking. You know, what do you think the, the green, and you can, like, what, there's going to be some way that you're measuring, like, carbon points, right?
There is one in the strip district, no, I just heard. I think it's great in terms of space saving in the urban area and to allow us to focus our land on density for residents.
Two spots, they can create 20 spots.
So I think it's, it's an interesting solution. I don't know how much power it's actually using. So we, but we're, we're happy to dive into and give more information. But we should not use our public land for our cars. So the more we can stack them up and reclaim this space, we are all supportive of those solutions.
Yeah, I'm looking at all the surface lots and things. There's a great opportunity here, especially the public ones, to, you know, keep some spaces, you know, but definitely look and see if there's opportunities to build density. So anyway.
I would just like to add on to that, though, that if we're looking to improve our transit system, we should be looking at public transit as the first step. That is the most sustainable option. And so if we're thinking about, you know, how do we improve our sustainability and how do we work to remediate the effects of climate change, it is getting people out of their cars and onto the bus or onto the T.
What's something that the city can do for public transit right now?
We can work with PRT more effectively to improve their implementation of the BRT and make sure that they're being held accountable for keeping their lines running on time. I know they're having a lot of delays and issues where residents aren't able to get to work or to school because the buses are changing because of the BRT. And while it's understandable, I think they need to be held accountable to make sure that there are alternative options for residents.
Well, as I say, the BRT is completed, and that's, I understand that there are some issues to work out. But the overall, I'm always interested in, we built, literally built bus stops on the, on the hillside to improve transportation for people in my district. And I'm wondering what, you know, what, what further can the city do?
I think the BRT went a pilot for low, 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 what's the word? Low income fare, thank you, Kayla. And I think continuing to expand access to the bus and reducing the cost. So city employee bus fare at a much better price would be a solution for the 3,000 people that work for the city and finding creative way to continue to reduce the cost, because the more accessible public transportation is, the more people are going to be likely to jump on it.
Just, I just want to reiterate, like, a large part of that is the county.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I hate always, like, passing the buck, but I'm always, that's why I, like, drilled into the question, like, what, like, I'm willing to do something like tomorrow, what the city can do. And I see a lot of these partnerships and, you know, I like a lot of, you know, hard infrastructure or hard things that we can do or, you know, supportive of city employees with the, you know, with the access to the transportation. I can't remember what it's called. The passes.
The passes. We can, in, within the city perimeter, we can be better bus shelters. So people are more likely to wait for the bus because it's, they're more protected. But like I said, we are, we're missing two staff right now, so we don't have our transportation staff in SNR anymore, but we work closely with Domi, so we're happy to dig up solution with them for you to support public transportation.
But I also wanted to give a plug for Domi's Transportation Demand Management Staff, who, you know, obviously, like, I feel like this is such a far-reaching topic that we could include Domi and forestry and, like, their tree planting efforts that are going to be transformational. But when it comes to the city working to encourage people to shift out of, you know, single occupancy vehicles into public transportation, right, like, we need the public transportation to be well utilized to help pay for itself. And post-COVID, we know that transit agencies across the country are suffering because of a lot of reasons. You know, here is because they can't hire staff and staff up as quickly, causing delays and cancellations. In other cities, it's just like, they can't, there's, just the transit ridership is down compared to pre-COVID. But Transportation Demand Management seems like it's something that can allow for planning around businesses and corporations to say, what would it take to get, like, 60%, 75% of your staff here to use transit or alternative forms of transportation to help them drive that ridership and maybe continue to bolster it? But, so shout out to Domi for having, you know, staff who are focusing on that, which is great. When it comes to some questions, so I know that we had Councilwoman Warwick, who really wanted to be here, was unexpectedly pulled out of the city for the day, had some questions she sent to me. So one was, you know, ideas around encouraging transit and alternative forms of travel besides cars. We did just get into that a little bit. Is there anything else that anyone wanted to add or something related to the comprehensive plan that is going to be underway soon that you wanted to add to that? Understanding that some of that is the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure as well. But I wanted to leave that space.
I think it's, you know, a lot of what we just mentioned. I think just general accessibility and, you know, sidewalk connectedness and things like that in terms of, like, what is in the city control, you know, things like that, that whether someone is rolling, walking, pushing a stroller, walking to a bus stop, you know, that the sidewalk network is, is accessible.
And then her other question was, what can we do to reduce plastic, to reduce plastic consumption, disposal at city-sponsored events? Is that something that is possible or is on anyone's radar or something that we could start to tackle even on a bite-sized level? Something that I've been thinking about as well, so I'm curious as well.
Something we've not touched on today is our collaboration with the procurement office in the Budget Office, where I think a lot of, a lot of climate decision are procurement decision, actually. And so if we change our guidelines to make sure we don't purchase plastic forks and plastic containers, that's one way to reduce plastic in city-sponsored events.
So procurement overall, just like what we're purchasing as a city, yeah?
It's our biggest impact.
Okay, so it's the biggest one. And then that could be transformational. And then, so what we always think of when we talk about it internally and staff and council is, you know, our special events, the public-facing ones, which maybe is a big one, but like a smaller contribution to this waste as a city than procurement overall. But I see after, kind of.
I think we're doing recycling already at special events, and we are composting at some point.
Okay.
Yeah, and we actually have been for a really long time. Our special events team is actually pretty awesome.
Okay.
And we've had zero-waste special events before, like, zero-waste was even like really a term, actually, since, I think, before I came in 2011, maybe 2010, since 20, at least 2009, at least. Special events has worked really hard. Like, our Arts Festival is a zero-waste event, and it requires a tremendous amount of coordination, but they, but they do it. And they do it every year, and they do it quite well. And we also, maybe about four years ago, actually piloted having a special events guide for city residents. So if a city resident wants to host a zero-waste event, whether it's just sort of a block party or beyond, we do have the guidelines for them to do that. We haven't made it something that's a requirement yet, but that is something that we can look into in the future is figuring out how to make it maybe a requirement for events hosted by residents to make them zero-waste events. We do have the resources. It does require a little bit of additional planning, but it is maybe something that we can do as, like, almost like a city consultant to residents who want to host a zero-waste event to help them to get those together. If we, if we go the route of trying to make it a requirement for them to have to have a zero-waste event for maybe parties over maybe 50 residents or something like that. So that's something that we could definitely work on in the future. And we do have, at least a structure already outlined for that to happen. Internally, we did, we do have guidelines for, for the future, for, you know, for purchasing, like Flora was talking about, in terms of not buying any more styrofoam. So even like in our break rooms and things like that, like, making sure that we're not buying things like styrofoam to make sure that we do have places to wash dishes, you know, and things like that, if we want to go that route as well. Something that would be really interesting is to work with city parks, especially the ones that do do food as part of composting, is transitioning the materials that they use in order to serve food and serve, in order to be compostable, so that it would actually flow. But we also have to have the, the end process of, you know, of the composting working so that they can actually dispose of those compostable materials. As part of the pilot that we did with the Healthy Active Living Center in Homewood, we did have compostable serveware as well. So that went along with that. That tremendously reduced the amount of waste that we were, that we were producing after, after the lunchtime meals, basically. So it was.
That's great. And I know that there are some other restrictions, like with the lunches that were served at rec centers. Those are like, maybe state, federal requirements attached to eating the meals onsite and not actually being allowed to bring the food home to family members or anything? Like, that's something out of our control. I know I'm kind of channeling Councilwoman Gross right now, but that's something that she's been kind of on for a long time. And if we can advocate collectively for a change of law there to allow for, say, someone, a child who's getting services and food at a rec center to be able to bring the weight, bring that home rather than throwing it away, would be huge.
Absolutely. There's a lot of the waste, if I, we can talk about that later. But some of the graphs that I showed, a lot of that waste is food that could have been recoverable and eaten if they were allowed to take that food home to their family, basically. And it just, at the end of the day, they have to throw it away. They're literally not allowed to let them take that home to their family.
And again, not a city, a city rule, and something that city council could even circumvent. We just have to follow.
We have to follow.
And we have to advocate for maybe change there. What I'm hearing, though, is for the resident-led events, whether you're, whether you are planning a block party, whether you are getting a permit for a park shelter, maybe the step before mandating zero-waste is making sure that our staff and DPW and city, well, I guess DPW mostly, and special events is, is really putting those guidelines in front of people. Here's how you, you know, go about it, and we really, really highly encourage you to then move to, you know, mandating zero-waste events. So, yeah.
And something else that we could also discuss is, you know, the way that we pick up waste. So there's a different division that picks up waste from parks than is that picks up waste from like our shelters and our community, our community centers that picks up waste from like our city-owned facilities, working in the background to help to sort of straighten it out so it's more streamlined. That could also be another approach that we can take to make sure that we're doing a better job of recycling, not just recycling and waste diversion, not just in like for composting, but also for making sure our internal system is working a lot more efficiently. So taking a look at that could probably really benefit us as well. I mean, I know that there is a struggle to do recycling and, and waste diversion in our city parks facilities, because it's like a different team that picks up waste in like, just like a park, you know. So trying to figure that out is something that we can work on internally as well.
So there were a couple of questions that were sent to me from residents and advocacy organizations that I wanted to make sure to ask here too publicly as well. And this might be something that I should know, but I don't, sometimes I don't remember the names of the things that we pass or that we sort of helped to implement. So was the city energy strategy of 2021 ever adopted? Does anyone know the answer to that?
So it didn't get adopted by city council. We've kept it as a guiding document for the Planning Department.
Okay.
And with the comprehensive plan starting, we can evaluate which of those strategies could be rolled in into the comprehensive plan.
Okay, great. And then there was originally meant to be an update to the Climate Action Plan in 2024. Is that still planned for or, or not? And if so, if not, why?
Like, I'll come back to the comprehensive plan. That's really going to be the bigger part of the department. So thanks, Marty, for obviously pointing that we need the funding for it. But we, if a climate, if an additional climate action plan is needed after the comprehensive plan, I think we are open to roll out an engagement strategy again to update it. This one is obviously starting to be dated. The effort was done a while ago, and some of the strategies might not be relevant anymore or might need to be modified to really have the impact intent. But we, we don't want to fatigue the residents in our community with engagement and planning again. We've done a lot of plans, and we really need to implement and take actions. So currently, our priority is not to do the update to the Climate Action Plan, but see how many of the existing strategies in the plan still need our division work in the coming year while engaging the company, community around climate during the comprehensive plan. And ultimately, which I truly believe that another plan just for climate is not the best solution. Our goal is really to embed sustainability and climate action in everything we are doing as a city. So ideally, we don't need a Climate Action Plan anymore, because it's everywhere in every other guided document that we have.
So what I'm hearing is, there's a lot that we can do that we're already doing and working to implement, and, you know, we're on, on, on the road to implementing a whole lot more. And all planning roads lead to the comprehensive plan, both for staff, for public engagement to the extent that residents, those who care about these issues, want to engage. The comprehensive plan is a whole lot more than land use. It's about climate, it's about waste, it's about water use, it's about stormwater, flood, plain mitigation, all of that. Like, that's your way to get involved. And there will be, I know, the mayor is a really big proponent of reaching populations that wouldn't necessarily be sitting in this room right now or at this table that, you know, should care about this because it affects everybody and affects environmental justice communities even more heavily and might not have been exposed to the ideas of, you know, the need for climate justice or the need for energy reduction or stormwater management, or et cetera, et cetera. Is anyone very quickly able to speak to the priority within the comp plan outreach to that point? I don't want to put anyone on the spot, but like, is that going to be a part of, is sort of kind of far-reaching?
Yes, I mean, everybody jumped in, but the call of the director and the mayor is really to get involved, people that were not involved in those plans before. So we will be, there's two consultants for the plan, and there is a consultant solely for the engagement, because it's really essential to reach out much further than we've been reaching out to. We're aware that we're not engaging everywhere, and we want to correct for that. And I also want to, part of the outreach for residents to improve their own homes and educate them on climate is changing our language, making sure we're just connecting our climate impact on their daily life and changing our vocabulary. And we've started this work, and we still have work to do on better communicating. But this, once everybody understands how climate is impacting them directly, they will naturally support and take those actions. And it's on us to, to make this knowledge available to our residents.
Yeah. That is also about, like, just being comfortable in your home, like, being warm in the winter, being cool in the summer, like, being healthy, you know, healthy in your own home and space, yeah, in your neighborhood. I'll just, this is the last point. I don't have any other questions, but hearing that we. hearing that we need to be retrofitting fifteen, on average fifteen, city buildings per year to stay on track is a stark reminder of how, like, that's where we're really sort of behind in our goal and meeting our goals and benchmarks. And, you know, I can understand why in every budget cycle that the impetus is to focus on, you know, the paving of roads or obviously like the, the fixing of landslides and, you know, upgrading of bridges and things that kind of tend to take the priority. Like, oh, well, you know, the building is still standing and doesn't, the roof doesn't need to be repaired, so let's let it sit for another year. And I understand that the, the big, the biggest energy consumer out of all of our buildings is the one we're in right now, the city county building. And I'll just say it, I'll just acknowledge that, like, politically for everyone, it's a very hard sell to the public that, you know, instead of doing, you know, fixing this bridge and that road and that landslide, we're going to spend money to retrofit the city county building where, you know, all the city council members and the mayor work. Like, that's a hard political sell. So we have to get, I think we all have to continue to work with the public again and everyone to understand that it's a benefit to everyone when we do things like retrofitting the city county building or the firehouse or the rec center or whatever it is to make it a world class building. And maybe even, you know, happier, more comfortable employees who are then going to serve the public even better as well.
And I will also point out that those are, that's one of the few opportunities in areas where retrofitting the building actually saves us money in the long run. So the money that we use to retrofit that building does come back to us over time so that that money can then be reinvested in other, in other areas. Not many things that we spend money on can, can say the same, so.
Exactly, well put. Well, I think I'll close on that note. Thank you all very much for your time, for your energy, for your work, day in and day out. This is incredibly important work. This is transformational work for not just those of us who are here today, but generations well into the future who are going to benefit from this. So thank you, thank you for, for all of this. And having exhausted the business of this post agenda, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.